From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting. Originating from the Kern County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy, and our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Welcome back to the regular board meeting, Tuesday, November 18th, 2:00 PM session. We'll begin, as we always do, with a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Parlier?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here. Thank you. And if we could, Ms. County Council, have a report on actions taken in closed session.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the board. This morning, in closed session, following this morning's AM agenda, your board heard items 32 through 36 in closed session, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you. We're going to move to our consent agenda. Consent matters are listed with a capital C, capital A, for consent agenda, and they are matters that are considered routine and non-controversial, excuse me, by county staff. But if there are members of the public who feel differently and would like to weigh in on those matters, you may do so after we list those items. They begin on page two, all consent matters listed, three through five, and on page three, all items listed, six through 11. On page four, items 12 and 13, as well as 15 through 19. On page five, all items listed, 20 through 27. On page six, all items listed, 28 through 34. And finally, on page seven, all items listed, 35 through 38. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment, ask questions on consent matters? Okay, seeing no interest in the public in doing so, I'll return to my colleagues for action.
Motion on consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on consent. Please cast your votes, gentlemen.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Excellent. Now, we'll move to page two and the public presentations portion of the agenda. And this matter, or this portion of the agenda, is reserved for matters that are not on today's specific agenda but are within the jurisdiction of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. Now is the time to come forward, please, and state your matter. Please give your name, state and spell it for the record, and give us your thoughts.
Ms. Lisa M.S.L.I.S.A., middle initial K, last name P.O.L.L.A.R.D. I went to the re-grand opening of Dress for Success, and Heidi, wanted to thank you, Chair, for your support. So it's a great program, a lot of nice things, and they're very patient with all the clients that they're helping to get jobs and a lot more.
Thank you so much for highlighting this, Lisa. It is an excellent, excellent place where you can get very nice, high-end, brand-name things for dirt cheap. It's rather astonishing what the products they have at Dress for Success, very, very nice. My office shops there on a regular basis, as do I, and it is dirt cheap. So think about it, and of course, we support Dress for Success, it's a great cause, and they work with all kinds of folks from all walks of life in Kern County to present themselves in the best way possible to, you know, elevate themselves, their interests, and their families. So thank you so much, Lisa. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, seeing no other interest in public presentations, we are going to move to board member announcements or reports. You may have noticed Jeff Flores is back for our PM session. We were expecting him to leave town, but he is back with us, which is very nice. And so, welcome, Jeff. Good to see you. Any other board member announcements or reports? Okay, we're going to move then to our only agenda item this afternoon, which is a budget matter, going to be presented today by Alex Alva out of the County Administrative Office, item number 14, a presentation on budget. Alex, the floor is yours.
Madam Chair, I'm going to start that presentation and then pass it on to Mr. Alva.
Understood. Thank you.
So today, we are sharing the first quarter budget status report, which provides a snapshot of the county finances as of September 30, 2025. This report helps explain where we stand today and the major issues influencing our budget moving forward. Our presentation will address five key areas. First quarter revenue and expenses, this is a quick look at how our budget is tracking so far. Federal funding, this is an update on county's reliance on federal resources and expected changes. HR1 developments, how ongoing changes at the federal level may affect our operations, funding, and compliance. Human services update, information on safety net programs, including demand for services and operational changes. And finally, state legislation, a summary of recent and upcoming state laws that may impact county priorities and funding. And although it's early in the fiscal year and the revenues are tracking within adjusted budget, we must stay disciplined in our fiscal management. Significant changes are coming, and they will likely create financial and operational challenges. And Mr. Alva, Budget Director, and Lito Morillo, Director of Department of Human Services, will brief your board on several of these key areas.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'd like to begin with the fiscal year 2526 budget, which your board adopted on August 26, 2025. As shown on this slide, the recommended budget totals 4.5 billion in expenditures. This budget was balanced relying on 4 billion in estimated revenue and transfers and 478 million in fund balance retained earnings and one-time funding sources. The budget reflects an increase in salary and benefit costs of 68.9 million, or 5.4% over the prior year, bringing your total workforce support to 1.35 billion. This investment by your board included a net increase of 31 positions, primarily to strengthen the fire department and expand graffiti abatement efforts across our community. The adopted budget has been continuously monitored and adjusted throughout the fiscal year to meet the evolving needs of the county and its departments. As you know, the budget serves as our financial plan, outlining how revenues will be allocated to support operations and services. Throughout the year, the departments return to your board with requests to adjust this plan in response to changing circumstances such as staffing needs, new grant awards, funding increases or reductions, and unforeseen factors. As of September 30, 2025, there has been 22 adjustments which reflect unanticipated revenue or changes in state and federal allocations. These first-quarter adjustments brought before your board totaled 633,000. As mentioned, the adopted budget included 8,669 authorized positions. However, as part of this quarterly update, departments are requesting a series of personnel adjustments aimed at improving operational efficiencies and service delivery. In total, the proposed changes result in a net increase of one position, with three positions requested for deletion and four positions requested for addition. All proposed additions and deletions will be effective November 29, 2025. This slide highlights general fund discretionary revenue, which totals 729.4 million. This amount represents approximately 61% of the overall general fund financing sources. The discretionary revenue is generated from several key sources, including property taxes, property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees, interest earnings, sales and use tax, and other miscellaneous revenue. Before these funds can be allocated to departments, they first must be used to meet required maintenance of effort contributions mandated for health and welfare programs, along with fixed obligations. These commitments total 162.4 million. After fulfilling these obligations, the remaining 567.1 million is available to support department budgets through net county cost allocations. This is a portion of the budget that provides flexibility for your board to prioritize services, address emerging needs, and invest in community initiatives. Property tax-related revenue represents the single largest share of general fund discretionary revenue, accounting for approximately 62.3%. For fiscal year 2526, property tax-related revenue is budgeted at 12.5 million, or 3.5% higher than the adopted budget for fiscal year 2425. The majority of property tax-related revenue is received between December and April, aligning with April with property tax collections. At the first quarter of the fiscal year, the County General Fund has collected approximately 24 million in property-related revenue of the 367 million estimated for the entire fiscal year. Sales and use tax makes up the second-largest source, representing approximately 27% of the budgeted discretionary revenue. Based on sales tax trends, one-time collections and economic drivers evaluated by the sales tax consultant is anticipated that total sales and use tax will be within the budgeted amount. Sales tax collection will likely remain essentially flat due to current economic conditions, which include inflation, interest rates, high consumer debt, and changes in consumer As noted on the previous slide, this revenue source represents the largest discretionary, the second-largest discretionary revenue source, accounting for approximately 27% of the budgeted total. Unlike property tax, this revenue stream is more volatile. It is heavily influenced by economic cycles, consumer behavior, and policy changes. In the first quarter of the fiscal year, the County General Fund collected about 15.5 million, which represents roughly 10% of the 157.6 million projected for the fiscal year. Month-to-month, sales tax receipts have fluctuated due to a combination of factors, including interest rates, inflationary pressures, and uncertainty in the labor market, the impacts of tariffs, and ongoing geopolitical conflicts. All of these conditions have contributed to softening consumer spending, which directly affects sales tax revenues. Our office will continue to closely monitor these revenues and broader economic indicators throughout the fiscal year. Updates from our sales tax collection, insights from our sales tax consultant, will be incorporated into the upcoming mid-year budget report, ensuring that the board has the most current information to guide fiscal decisions. At the previous board meeting, Supervisor Couch asked about the reductions in our sales tax from the prior year to the current 78.3 million. Of that amount, there was reductions of 5.4 million in one-time adjustments from one-time projects, the majority being solar projects. 2 million was in economic adjustments. That revenue was received with pre-purchases to avoid tariffs, and the largest amount was 26.4 million for receipts allocated to the correct jurisdictions. This brought us down to the 78.3 million that we see now. As of September 2025, the county's pro-rata share of Prop. 172 revenues has declined by approximately 1.6% compared to the budgeted pro-rata factor. Despite these adjustments, the County Administrative Office projects total Prop. 172 revenue of 113 million, which is about 1.4 million above the budgeted amount of 112 million. This projected year-end surplus will be reserved for future years, providing a safeguard against unforeseen revenue reductions or extraordinary events that may require additional funding. The projection is grounded in prior year revenue trends and consultant forecasts and remain consistent with the adopted budget, falling within the expected margin of error. It is important to note that the revenue estimates will continue to be refined throughout the fiscal year, as approximately 35% of annual Prop. 172 revenue is anticipated between November 2025 and February of 2026. 1991 and 2011 realignment continues to play a critical role in funding county departments that provide public safety, health, and social services. In fiscal year 9192, the state approved the Health and Welfare Realignment Program, shifting certain programs' responsibility from state to counties. This shift was accompanied by a dedicated funding stream from sales and vehicle license fees. The revenues are restricted and must be used to support mental health, social services, and health programs within the county. 2011 realignment further expanded this framework, providing dedicated funding sources for public safety, health, and welfare services. For fiscal year 2526, the adopted budget included 271.3 million in projected 2011 realignment. As of September 30, 2025, the county has received 59.2 million, representing about 22% of the anticipated annual total. Realignment growth funds are typically dispersed in September or October and are recognized at mid-year through unanticipated revenue requests to your board. Fiscal year 2526 growth funds are estimated at 1.5 million. In addition, realignment revenue is projected to exceed budget estimates by approximately 3.1 million, driven by the one-time growth and increase in the base allocation. Overall, the fiscal year 2526 budget is performing in line with adjustments previously approved by your board. Personnel costs for salaries and benefits are currently tracking at 22.1% of the annual adjusted budget. Expenditures for services and supplies are tracking at 13.8% of the total annual appropriations, slightly lower than the 14.72% last year. Capital and operational expenditures have shown a modest reduction in the first quarter. It's important to note that spending levels are expected to rise over the remaining three quarters of the fiscal year, as departments often delay purchase to ensure resources are available and properly aligned with operational priorities. As noted earlier, expenditures related to personnel costs for salaries and benefits are tracking in line with the budgeted amount. However, this slide highlights the staffing expenses are trending higher than in each of the prior three fiscal years, reflecting the county's ongoing investment in its workforce. The recommended budget for 2526 included 68.9 million increase in salary and benefit costs, representing a 5.4% increase over the prior year. This increase accounts for negotiated labor agreements, an addition of new positions to strengthen critical services. As of September 30, 2025, expenditures for salaries and benefits total 299 million against the full-year budgeted of 1.35 billion. This early spending pattern is consistent with expectations and demonstrates the county's commitment to supporting its employees while maintaining fiscal discipline. Although property tax remains the single-largest source of discretionary revenue, it is not the only funding that supports county-wide services. This slide illustrates the total resources available to support county services for fiscal year 2526. The recommended budget is financed through a combination of ongoing revenue, operating transfers in fund balance, and reserves and designations. While property tax is a critical component, the largest share of funding actually comes from restricted state and federal and other government aid, which accounts for 34.1% of all revenue sources. This reliance on external funding highlights both the strength and vulnerability of our budget. On the one hand, these resources allow the county to deliver essential services in areas such as public health, social services, and public safety. On the other hand, reductions in federal-state funding can have significant impacts on county departments, as we saw earlier this fiscal year when public health experienced reductions that required immediate adjustments. Signed into law on July 4, 2025, HR1, the One Big Beautiful Act, introduced sweeping reforms across multiple government sectors, including major changes to tax, healthcare, food assistance, and energy policy. Among its most immediate and impactful provisions were reductions to Medicaid funding as structural changes to SNAP. These adjustments include both short-term eligibility modifications and long-term budgetary constraints. For county like ours, these changes carry significant implications. Today, our focus will be on healthcare and social safety net impacts of HR1, examining how this affects our residents, our service delivery systems, and ultimately, our budgetary The Human Services Department Administration budget totals 307.7 million, with 1,769 authorized positions. Of this amount, 127.6, or 41%, comes from federal funding. This reliance underscores how essential federal dollars are in sustaining administrative operations and workforce capacity. The financial aid budget for 2526 is 394.2 million, with 116, or 30%, funded by federal sources. Because such a significant portion of these budgets depend on federal allocations, any reduction in federal funding would have substantial impacts. Reductions could force the department to adjust programs, workforce, or delay critical initiatives. In turn, this could affect the county services and operations. This reliance highlights the importance of careful monitoring of federal policy changes and proactive planning to mitigate risk. By maintaining reserves where possible and engaging in strong advocacy at the state and federal levels, the county can better safeguard against disruptions and continue to provide essential services to its residents. I would now like to turn it over to Director of Human Services, Lito Morillo, to discuss the impacts to his department.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lito Morillo, your Director of Human Services. So SNAP, as it's known at the federal level, is basically CalFresh here in California, previously known as food stamps. So in California, we issue about $12.5 billion in food stamps benefits every year. We have approximately 207,000 people currently on CalFresh right now in Kern County. And like many other counties throughout the state, we're all trying to contend with how to deal with HR1 and impacts of it, and how to mitigate some of the potential impacts. But I'll go over some of the changes within the SNAP program, and then I'll touch on the Medi-Cal program. I'll start with SNAP first. The work requirement, the expanded work requirement, has been around since 1996. It's called ABOD, A-B-A-W-D, and it stands for Able Body Adults Without Dependent Children. So in essence, what it does is it restricts the number of months you can receive CalFresh in a three-year period. So individuals that have no dependents, able-bodied adults basically, can only receive CalFresh for three months in a three-year period. Over the last six, seven years, California, like many other states, has had an ABOD waiver, which means that we didn't necessarily have to comply with this work requirement, which meant a lot more people were on the CalFresh program. meant a lot more people were on the CalFresh program. Under H.R. 1, those waivers go away, and they expand the ABOD requirement to ages 18 to 64. Previously, it was 18 to 54. So if you don't have any dependents, you're not medically disabled, you're not, obviously don't have any dependents in your household under the age of 14, you've got to have some work requirement. You've got to work 20 hours a week, otherwise you can no longer receive CalFresh benefits. It also eliminates the work restriction waiver that used to apply to foster youths, veterans, and homeless individuals. So those exemptions are going away too. So again, those individuals, I stated, foster youths, veterans, and homeless will now have to meet the work requirements under the ABOD work requirements. It does add some new exemptions for Native Americans and individuals eligible for Indian health services, so they will still be able to be ABOD exempt, if you will. CDSS estimates that there's going to be about 495,000 people impacted by this currently right now, which is about 9% of the CalFresh population. So if you extrapolate that out and apply it to Kern County's total population, we're talking about 18,000 people that could be potentially impacted and lose CalFresh benefits if they don't find work 20 hours per week, again, to satisfy the ABOD requirement. CalFresh also limits benefits to legal permanent residents, and this is a change because prior to H.R. 1, it used to allow for benefits to refugees, asylees, battered non-citizens, and traffic victims. So now it's strictly only for legal permanent residents. CDSS estimates that about 73,000 to 74,000 will be impacted and lose benefits as a result of this new change under H.R. 1, and that's about 1% of the total California population. So again, using that 1% and extrapolating that out, that comes out to about 2,000 people in Kern County that could be potentially impacted. And then another change under H.R. 1 with regards to SNAP benefits, unlike in years past, ever since CalFresh has been around or food stamp prior to that, the benefits side of CalFresh has always been federally funded, 100%. What's happening now is, under H.R. 1, states are now going to have to have a cost share in the CalFresh benefits they issue if they have a payment error rate that exceeds a certain percentage. So states that have an error rate under 6% will not have to contribute to their CalFresh benefit share of cost, if you will. If you have a payment error rate between 6% to 8%, you will need to contribute, as a state, 5% of the total benefits that you issue. If your payment error rate is between 8% to 10%, you will have to pay 10% of the benefits that the state issues. And just to put that in perspective, at 10%, California would have to pay $1.3 billion. And then any states that exceed 10% of the payment error rate will have to pay 15%, and to the state of California, that's about $2 billion. So that's a new added wrinkle in terms of cost shift to the counties as a result of H.R. 1. The other cost shift is going to effect October 1, 2026, is the administrative cost shift. In years past, prior to H.R. 1, the cost split between administrative costs for the CalFresh program was 50/50, 50% feds, 50% state, and then gets parceled out to the county. With H.R. 1, that shifts to 25% fed and 75% state, increasing the county's costs ultimately from 15% to 22% of the non-federal share. This could amount to anywhere from $5 to $19 million in shortfall for us here in Kern County. That's the SNAP side of the changes as it relates to H.R. 1. Now I'll touch on the Medi-Cal side. In California, there's about a third of the residents that rely on Medi-Cal as their primary healthcare insurance. In Kern County, it's about 53% of our population. We have close to 470,000 people currently on Medi-Cal in Kern County. And it's estimated the state could lose about $30 billion in funding annually and could affect about 3.4 million people in terms of healthcare coverage overall. So some of the changes as it relates to H.R. 1 and Medi-Cal were the work requirements. In Medi-Cal, unlike CalFresh, as I stated to you earlier, CalFresh has always had a work requirement. It just, we just had waivers in California, so that's why it's never really been impactful. But Medi-Cal's never had in its history any work requirements. So what are those work requirements? So it basically says the work requirements are required for individuals 19 to 64, again, able-bodied, to work at least 80 hours a month, and this goes into effect January 1, 2027. There's exemptions to this, and that's for parents with kids under 14, or if you have a child with a disability, individuals who are medically or fragile or disabled, individuals in substance abuse disorder treatment programs, they're exempt from this work requirement. Otherwise, you would have to participate in some kind of work activity, which includes volunteering as well, up to 80 hours per month to continue receiving your Medi-Cal benefits. Another change is that currently, right now, we do Medi-Cal renewals on an annual basis. Under H.R. 1, we'll be required to do them on a semi-annual basis, which literally doubles the amount of renewals staff will have to be doing. Effective October 1, 2028, there's a $35 copay for individuals on Medi-Cal that fall under the 100% to 38%, 138% federal poverty level. And there's also, in the state of California, in effective July 1, 2027, $30 monthly premium for those that are considered illegal immigrants, if you will. The retro Medi-Cal for, under H.R. 1, changes as well. In years past, if you applied for Medi-Cal, you could receive, three months prior to receiving Medi-Cal, you could retroactively get covered to receive additional medical services. Now that's been reduced to one month prior to your application, so meaning to say, if you come in today, you would only be covered one month back for medical services you encountered a month prior to your application. So they shortened that window quite a bit. They changed the managed care organization tax for states, basically allowing states to only charge 6% and then phase that out by half percent each year, all the way up to 3.5%. And this goes into effect October 1, 2027. This impacts our overall state funding in terms of Medi-Cal dollars all the way around. So all these changes are obviously at the federal level, but the state has responded quite a bit to a lot of things the state, that the feds are asking it to. So right now, California has frozen new enrollment for 19 and above who are undocumented and don't have a satisfactory immigration status here. But those that were on Medi-Cal prior to January 1, 2026 will continue to remain eligible provided they pay that $30 monthly premium that they're now required to pay. Dental benefits are going to be denied for those that are, again, don't have the right immigration status. And then, like I said, there's quite a bit of individuals that are receiving Medi-Cal now throughout the state. It's a large number, 15 million. All these changes drastically impacts not only funding from the county level, state level, but obviously impacts our overall workload as well because of all the regulatory eligibility changes. I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Well, thank you for the good news.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions, gentlemen? Supervisor Parlier.
Thank you, and it's not for you, Lito. It's more of a general question regarding TOT, so maybe it's to you, Alex. I'd like just to come back and give an update where we are at with comparisons of like counties, or maybe in the city of Bakersfield, on where we fall with our TOT comparison.
We'll be happy to come back, Supervisor Parlier, to the chair, but we are lower than the city of Bakersfield. We, in the past, attempted to increase it because it has to go to the voters. That proposition failed, but we'll be back to, we'll be happy to provide a comparison with other counties and cities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Parlier. Madam Chair, I have a question for staff. Thank you, Alex. You had a percentage associated with the TOT. It said 9%. What does that, what does that mean? Can't remember what page that's on. What's the significance of that?
That's just the percent that's collected as of September 30, 2025. So the amount that we've budgeted to receive for the entire fiscal year, and then the amount that we've collected through September 30, 2025.
Thank you. And then, given our last year, what was the total amount collected for TOT in the last fiscal year? Do you have that number?
I'd have to look, but it'd be close to the amount that we have budgeted there of 3.2 million.
3.2, okay, thank you. That serves as a good baseline. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Flores. Okay. Oh, Supervisor Couch.
Thank you. Actually, I got two. So, one quarter in, we haven't collected one quarter of our revenues that are projected. Is that typical for us?
Supervisor Couch to the chair, that is typical.
Okay. So I'm not supposed to worry yet?
Not yet. If you're referring to sales tax collection, the majority of that is collected, again, through February 2026, when a lot of individuals obviously go out for purchases during the winter holiday, so.
Got you, got you, okay. This one's probably for you, Lito. With regard to the expanded work requirements, which is the 80 hours a month, 20 hours a week for work, volunteering, or you can be in school too, right?
That is correct, Supervisor Couch to the chair.
What are we doing to channel people or funnel them that don't know where to go to volunteer? They don't know where to go to, I mean, I know we have ETR for jobs, but what do we have for volunteerism? Does your department have something that will sort of direct them to be able to obtain the hours that they need?
Sure. Supervisor Couch to the chair, we haven't gotten official guidance on a lot of these things that we shared with you today. We obviously wanted you to be aware of what's coming up. We've already had discussions with various community-based organizations, CAP-KAY to be example, and how to go about utilizing volunteers, funneling them with the volunteers in hopes that that could satisfy the work requirements for both SNAP as well as CalFresh, um, SNAP as well as Medi-Cal.
Okay. You're open to other ideas as well?
Absolutely. Anywhere we can establish a system, whether it be through volunteering, through, obviously, going to school, where we can track their hours, absolutely open to those ideas, so that way people can stay on the program accordingly.
And when they say going to school counts, does that mean college, it means, it means community college, it means trade school, it means even some of the private school? I mean, is it any type of education? What's, where's the list of that? Do you have that yet that qualify?
We don't. It's our understanding that that's going to be the case. We don't have the final guidance on that. Of course, the other part of that is, when you go to school, how do you, how do you convert credits to hours of work, right?
Right.
And so those are things that we'll have to kind of really figure out.
Yeah, I was kind of going there. How do you prove it's 20 hours a week? Does that include the time, the class time only, or is that study time as well? I mean, what is it? Maybe we don't know these things yet.
We don't, not at this time. Those are the kind of guidances that we're waiting on.
All right. Thank you for your help.
Thank you, Supervisor. Great questions. Okay, let's keep going.
As noted by Mr. Morillo, the recent federal changes could result in significant reductions and increased costs. As shown on this slide, the effect of these changes could reach approximately 72 million by fiscal year 2829, with no additional revenue sources identified to offset the impact. This level of unfunded cost growth would significantly affect the county's ability to sustain operations and maintain service levels for its residents. I would now like to turn it over back to your Assistant CEO, Elsa Martinez, to go over additional local impacts.
Thank you. Well, it sounds like bad news, but I think it's important for the public and your board to be aware that, from a high-level perspective, these impacts outlined in the presentation are real and growing, and will likely affect most of our residents. So first, counties will carry a much heavier administrative and financial responsibility. And because counties are responsible for determining eligibility, this is not one of those programs that your board can terminate. We are responsible, we're mandated to provide that service. So these new requirements means more paperwork, more staff pressures, and potentially slower processes for residents who need help. Second, we will likely see an increase in demand for critical services. And this is important because when people lose coverage and have an emergency, their first response is to call 911. So that impacts our firefighters and emergency services. Third, these changes may lead to an increase on uninsured populations. Counties are, we are being forced to revisit our indigent care programs, both from medical and behavioral health. And if your board remembers, prior to the Affordable Care Act, Kern Medical was the provider of indigent care through our program. Now that they're a hospital authority, we have to revisit that program and determine what is the best method for the county to provide these mandated services. This would not only impact medical services, behavioral health as well. We, the county, are the provider of behavioral health. We function as a managed care for the county, and we use both Medi-Cal and realignment funds to provide those services. As Alex indicated, realignment has shifted. As part of the Affordable Care Act, the state took some of our realignment for health services to offset their cost for the increased population now on Medi-Cal. Now shrinking, we're hoping that those funds can come back to the county, but we have not received any guidance from the state, yet the obligation remains with the county. And then, as we saw during the federal shutdown, we are witnessing growing food insecurity. Many families may turn to food banks if their benefits change or disappear. So for this reason, it is important when departments receive information from the state or their association, they also share it with our office. We are forming a working group to review the county's indigent program resolution. We are taking part in state meetings, and we're working with other counties to understand the options and potential opportunities that we will face as these changes take place. So at this time, Mr. Alba will share with your board a summary of the recent changes at the state level, and will end the presentation with a recommendation for your board.
As we continue to monitor the impacts of federal legislation, our office will also remain vigilant in assessing the effects of state measures such as Assembly Bill 118, Senate Bill 707, and Assembly Bill 339 on county operations. We are working closely with our departments and lobbyists to evaluate both the financial implications and operational challenges these bills present. We will provide regular updates to your board on specific impacts of these measures, including quantitative impacts such as direct costs, budgetary pressures, and potential delays in procurement or service delivery. Also qualitative impacts such as transparency and overall efficiency of county operations. By continuously analyzing these legislative developments, we aim to ensure that the county is well-prepared to adapt, mitigate risk, and continue delivering essential services to our community. In conclusion, our office will return to your board on February 24, 2026, to present the mid-year budget status report. At that time, we will review the progress of the fiscal year adopted budget and assess how actual performance compares to our budget projections. We will present an updated projection based on first-half actuals, emerging economic trends, and recommend any mid-year adjustments as needed to maintain fiscal balance. We will also provide, with the referral, an update on transient occupancy tax comparisons with like counties and cities. We will also provide an update outlining a phased or strategic mitigation strategy to address the challenges, particularly those stemming from federal and state legislation such as H.R. 1. Finally, we will summarize policy updates and implications, highlighting changes that affect budget priorities, operational requirements, and compliance obligations. As we move forward, our commitment remains to provide timely, transparent, and actionable information. By anticipating challenges and preparing strategic responses, we will continue to safeguard the county's fiscal stability while delivering essential services to our residents. The recommended action today is to receive and file and approve the addition and deletion of positions as summarized in the report, and refer the matter to Human Resources Department to amend the department positions and salary schedule. This concludes staff's prepared remarks, and we're available to answer any additional questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. And... Thank you very much for your presentation, and a very thorough presentation. Thank you, Elsa. Are there members of the public who would like to weigh in or ask questions about the presentation that's just delivered? Okay, I'll return to my colleagues then for action. A motion from Supervisor Couch to receive and file.
Second.
And we have a second by Supervisor Flores. There's also the positions issue. You, staff's recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. So Supervisor Couch moves staff's recommendation. Supervisor Flores, you second that friendly amendment. Excellent. So we have a motion, a second. Gentlemen, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Okay. That brings us to the end of our agenda today. We will be breaking for our Thanksgiving holiday. I want to take a moment to thank our staff for all your hard work here, everything that you have done to make today possible. Thank you to our clerk. I want to wish you a very, very merry, wonderful, pleasant Thanksgiving. I think it was Marcus Aurelius who said that not only is gratitude the finest of all the virtues, it is the parent of all the others. So I think it's a great experience to be grateful, to count our blessings, and to, you know, cultivate that in our spirit is very, very critical. Peace of personal happiness and just general overall well-being. So I am thankful for all of you, thankful to my colleagues, thankful for the privilege of serving in this capacity, and I sincerely hope that you all have a wonderful Thanksgiving. We'll see you back December 9th.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn from Jeff Flores.